We told him, you know, we just ignored him and let you guys have it and you're not even from town. Yeah. So, you know, I let him know that didn't happen because he had the opportunity about two months before you guys ever come forward and ask about those diamonds. But anyway, I want to make sure we have insurance and if he don't have insurance, his teams don't have insurance, I don't want them out there because of the liability.
No, I understand. I apologize.
And, you know, if you would, get a copy of it, get a copy of their team. Each team's gonna be out there. Let's get it to Robin so we have it in file.
You do have some of ours, right?
Actually, we should have copies on.
I say at this point, there's only been two teams that used it regularly and then there were two other teams of our younger ones that came up and played a couple of games.
Yeah, I don't know who he, you know, I don't go by there in the evening stuff. I don't know how many teams haven't come in up here using these diamonds. I don't know anything about what's going on out there, you know.
It's more than a day or two before.
Okay.
So, what he's gonna ask.
Typically on Thursday evenings, correct?
Yeah. There was some Tuesdays, I think, there were some Sunday afternoons every once in a while. It kind of changed a little bit every couple of weeks.
But that's, that was the only things that I had and then, you know, that I was wanting you to come to the meeting and we could discuss that and then also, you know, wanted to discuss your guys' request for doing the shuttle or whatever for.
Yeah, I just have some general questions, you know, on the festival. We'd love to be a part of that and I guess I just want to find out for you guys what was expected or what you wanted us to do or what we're allowed to do or kind of with that aspect, I mean, I figure obviously parking cars there and that there needs to be some way to get the people up here safely and I, I knew about the, with the trolley from Tipton that's been used in the past.
With the tractor, yeah. It goes down central, comes around and.
I didn't know that was the preference to go with something like that or, I know the church I'm a part of has a small bus and I, I know quite a few people with golf carts. I didn't know if the small buses and golf carts was an easier way so that it wasn't a big tractor with the trolley coming through. I, I didn't know what the preference was there.
Yeah, during, during festival, golf carts are not permitted.
Not in, not in this, not in.
We're, we're talking about just bringing people up and dropping them off.
Indiana and Main Street's where it was when it come up central.
Because playing, I mean.
Go back out.
Sort of a plan that I've sort of started working on is we'd have a contact guy down at the fields, a contact guy at the drop-off point so that we can communicate back and forth when we need to bring somebody up if, if we're not got somebody already going in rotation and, you know, that's what I was trying to figure out from there, if we had the bus and then just some golf carts to help with the bus was in transit or something like that and maybe we had it.
An emergency or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you'd be having them picked up down here.
Yeah, in the past, we're.
By Louisiana.
Yeah, dropped them off there on Indiana.
Indiana, man.
So, that's kind of what I was gonna find is kind of what was done in the past, what's expected, what works the best from there and then I didn't know beyond that, you know, are the boys allowed to sell bottled water or?
Sure.
Or, you know, are we allowed to set up a grill and have hamburgers? I mean, I didn't know what all was, was allowed.
More to health.
Because obviously the idea, all of the funds would go towards renovations and stuff that need to, need to happen there and as we are in the process of doing a lot of our tryouts for the next year, we're, we're taking deposits and the majority of those deposits are gonna go into the fund to put into those good field there as well. So, that's, that's where we're at with that process too.
Yeah, you'll be amazed at how many vehicles you'll park. I mean, that's a.
I've come up here probably at least three or four of the past five or six years, so I've, I've seen how busy it gets up here.
That fills up pretty fast because everybody's scared they get too far into town, they can't get back out, so they want to park on the outskirts and get a ride.
Right.
So, it fills up pretty fast. But I don't, I don't have any objections to them to sell them water or hamburgers, hot dogs or whatever they can do to raise whatever funds they can.
Okay.
If, I, if in the past, they used the town's tractor and then rented that or borrowed that trolley from Tipton, if you want to do that, anybody that's operating our equipment would have to have a driver's license check to make sure that, you know, they got a valid driver's license and our insurance will cover them because it'd be on our equipment. But if you're using yours, I don't think that would be necessary with.
Is there an opportunity to work with Rata Bush on the tractor?
I don't know if he's got a bus and stuff.
Work with Rata Bush on a tractor?
No, listen, he'd give us one already if we wanted to use the trolley. They give us a higher standard driver.
They want, they want to provide their own drivers.
But they'll provide the driver.
Yeah, Rata Bush shows up.
If we do the trolley, Rata Bush will provide the driver for the tractor and the tractor.
They're our corporate sponsor this year.
Okay.
They're looking for.
So, is that maybe the way to go, the preferred way to go? I mean, I, I just didn't know how much room that took up. I just thought it'd be better to have smaller vehicles.
It's not big.
Okay.
I guess we would need to know so we could, like, we're gonna know what way to prepare for that.
Is, is there a, a cost to the trolley? Do I understand that correctly?
I don't know. Sometimes I can give it for free if not, it's a hundred dollars.
For the, for the day or for the whole weekend?
For the weekend.
Okay.
I don't believe they charge for the rides from the parking up here.
No, no.
No, well.
Just kind of include it in.
I assume, yeah, and I didn't know what was done in the past as far as a cost of the parking, no, there isn't.
Gosh, I can't remember.
It was five bucks.
Going there anywhere anymore.
Okay. Let me double check with Mr. Brzezinski on the trolley thing, but if, if that sounds probably like the best way to go, they've got drivers.
Yeah.
They're a much, they furnish, furnish a machine, but they're furnishing a driver.
Well, I'll check with Mr. Brzezinski and I'll send something back to Robin as quick as I can.
Chance of that parking out here?
Well, I got it. That's what I was asking Robin because our fire department didn't know what they want to do, so that's why I didn't know. We should split one with, I mean, one would do parking, one would do breakfast, you know.
Once I talked to Tom, they were, well, they were leaning towards the parking, but they were gonna talk to Cicero Township and see if Cicero Township wanted to help with the parking. Yeah. We're on Tom time. Are you guys interested in doing a breakfast if fire department doesn't? I mean, we want to see somebody come up, so we're.
There's a building up over here at our park that they have breakfast for the vendors.
Do you guys have the manpower to pull something like that off or, I mean, does that even sound to you looking interested?
Possibly.
We'd need about six or eight people.
Oh, yeah.
We could pership, pership, I mean, depending on how you want to break it down.
If you could send me an email with details of what would be needed, I definitely can ask. And what are the dates again? I'm sorry.
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Okay, that's what I thought. I'm sure. I mean, yeah, if, I mean, were any opportunities, yeah, but just if you let me know kind of sure what mine and tail and then I can, I can ask.
That and then our festival meeting will be our next meeting at six o'clock. So, maybe you can be here and we can.
For a fest, for a festival meeting? And when is that? I'm sorry.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday.
Don't ask my ringtone.
At six.
Six. And if the local department doesn't park cars out here, you guys, if you're interested in out there and they don't, our department doesn't do that, that's a pretty good measure out there.
Place too, yeah.
It's close enough festival, all you gotta do is park the cars and they can walk to the festival from there. You don't have to transport them in any way, shape or form if.
So, you can have cell phones there.
Cell phones down there. Okay.
That's something we can find out from fire chief if they're gonna do that or not and if not, you guys are interested in it, maybe we can get that set up for yous.
Okay.
Probably know it at my festival meeting.
Probably hold a talk again, I'm telling you. We're on time.
I would just try to get.
Do we have anything else that's got something? It's baseball. Much baseball.
I get the sense that Snipes, what they've done so far is a good addition.
Do you have anything else?
Just a call name and phone. I'm fifteen minutes away, so.
Yeah.
Give you a call here.
And I'll talk to the guys with N Y D. I know I've got a mowing crew, so I'll try to get those guys up here.
Okay. I appreciate that. I said we're short-handed right now and Andy could sure use the help out there. There's a lot of mowing weed even for one person with everything else going on. All right, we'll move on. Mr. Luiz, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did.
Chris Luiz is with us tonight and he's a member of the Cicero Town Council.
Cicero Town Council. I'll just take a seat here. Wanted to come see you guys tonight. It's rather interesting hearing you speak here, much of the same issues that we face and the animal control, that's one I don't know, but I've heard it talked about the county not wanting to be a part of the county program, so I think that's what you were referring to there, but just a question, does the train come to the festival?
No.
Okay. All right, well, that's why I'm here. I wanted to come and talk to you guys a little bit about the train and I'm not coming with a request of anything, just throwing some information out there, have you guys think about it and see if it'd be something you'd be interested in. My thought with the, with the tracks is I'd love to see that eventually turn into a trail system, going from Forest Park all the way up through Tipton. Okay? There's, you know, opposition, you know, to that, obviously the Port Authority, I don't know if you guys are the ownership of, of the rail, of the Port Authority, but it's the third Noblesville, third Fishers and the third county, right? They form a board that oversees the utilization of the right of way and the property. You know, I, and I asked that and I wasn't, wasn't joking when I asked that, you know, I've read in the last two months everything about the train and it's all been about the state fair train and I think the northern, northern part of the county gets left out in that regards and, you know, there, there's no mention of that and that's why I look at it as, you know, if you, if you go Forest Park south and let it stay the train and ask for permission to make it a trail going north of Forest Park, I think there'd be a benefit to the residents. The people in the communities would enjoy that and get more benefit out of that than an existing rail line. You know, there's, I'm sure, long-term visions about what that could be, a high-speed rail or whatnot, but I'm sure if it ever was a high-speed rail or anything of that nature, it wouldn't go right through Atlanta. It'd go around. It wouldn't go right through Arcadia, you know, it wouldn't go right through Cicero. So, like I said, I, what, what my thought would be is that, you know, eventually we would go forward, you know, and I get, if I could get a vote of approval from Cicero, Arcadia and Atlanta, you know, we could eventually take that forward to the governing bodies over the Port Authority. I'm not asking for that tonight, I'm just asking for you guys to start considering that, talking to residents, see if that'd be something you'd be in favor in. I don't have answers, how much would it cost, you know, would this replace the Northern Hamilton County Trail? Obviously, I think you guys are part of the Northern Hamilton County Trail system, right? Would this replace that? Would it supersede that? I'm not to that point. My, my question is, would there be an interest in this? Because, you know, I know people in the past, you know, when they were doing the Northern Hamilton County Trail, the Port Authority was approached and asked and my understanding is the Port Authority said no and if, if we were gonna do this, I don't know that going to the Port Authority would be the, the avenue to which we would ultimately end up going. We, I would envision going more towards the county and asking for, for their, you know, blessing and, and, you know, approval and, and being a third owner of the Port Authority. So, I don't know if anyone has any questions.
How far north are you envisioning this?
I'd love, you know, I've talked to Tipton. Tipton loves the idea. Both the county and the city individuals I've spoken with there love the idea.
I live by the railroad.
And, and, you know, so, so they're about it. I, you know, I've talked to people in Cicero and they seem to be excited. I, Arcadia, I went to a meeting, it was last week, the week before, they said, well, let us think about it at this point, you know, like, I, I don't want an answer, I just kind of want people to start thinking about it, you know, what would be the pros, what would be the cons to that? What would be the enjoyment?
How far does the Port Authority control the tracks?
I can't say how far into Tipton County, but, but it, you may know more than me. I know there's been some that's been vacated up there already and.
Yeah, it only went to the pizza place.
Yeah.
Pizza Shack.
It extends maybe a block north of the pizza place, but virtually it doesn't go past the pizza shack. But it hasn't been up there.
It, well, yeah, we're upset that no one got killed, yeah. Been over a year.
Well, that's not what I want to talk about.
I was under the impression that the people who run the train there, there in the Museum of Noblesville, is they don't have the personnel, they don't have the finances and, you know, I thought that was more of the reason as to why they were coming up this way. And then I thought, well, maybe there's rail problems, you know, and they didn't want to invest the money to, so I, I really don't know. People assume that it was, they stopped coming up here due to the accident up there, you know. I don't know. Have you been in, have you been, had any conversation with the train?
I, I personally don't want to speak on their behalf. You know, I think right now, it's fairly clear, they, right now, they're not authorized. The Port Authority has not authorized to use them, to use the rail line because of the issues that were discovered in the spring, they released that information in the spring. So, at that point, I mean, that's all I can say for sure, you know, is, is what I per se read in regards to that. You know, will they eventually come up here? Yeah, it may, they may come up through, up here, you know, maybe, maybe, you know, the Hamilton County Tourism Board, I know in the past has been a big supporter of, of the train and that it, you know, it's a tourist industry and brings people into the community and things and I, I don't dispute that. I just look at it as, you know, and I myself actually have used the train for the Poole Express, but when I did, you know what? We went to Fishers and got on it and then they came it all the way to Noblesville and they said, well, we won't go into the town because they'll shut the town down. So, they turned, they went, you know, went backwards. So, to me, it's, it's a little bit more of a novelty experience that I don't know that really the residents of, of the northern part of the county here get much benefit from the existing, existing line and.
Well, I think only the shack is really a benefit and a group actually, they do stop here occasionally, but Atlanta, we're, we're not set up for a lot of, you know, present time, a lot of tours, but, you know, that might be something for us to discuss later on.
What's that train store over here? I don't know. He may like the train.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I meant. Why they quit coming up here, you know, I've, I've got that in the back of my mind.
Safety issues.
Well, again, I think it's, you know, there again, I can't, can't say for sure it's, the safety issues are why they've had their light, their contract revoked from the, the Port Authority now as far as if, if they were to, you know, be granted that, that again, would they make a concentrated effort to come up this way? You know, I, I can't speak to that. I, all's I would ask is that you guys, you know, consider, do you think the town would benefit best by having a trail system through here and, you know, linking into Tipton as well as to, you know, a long ride from here to Forest Park? So, that's, that's all I've got, any questions or anything? I guess, you know, my thought would be I can check back with you guys in a month or two months and, and kind of see where you guys stood, any thoughts, you know, at that point in time and if, if so, then, you know, I would ask, you know, for, I guess, a resolution of support of the idea, like, of concept, you know, with, with non-committal funds, similar, I think, what Cicero did with the, with the Northern Hamilton County Trail.
We did the same thing.
You know, we stamped, yeah, we support this, but we didn't stamp that we're prepared to fund this, so.
Was there any way you're gonna talk to the northern trail?
What I'm trying to do, I'm trying to get.
Maybe coincide it with each other?
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to get support, you know, and, you know, and I don't want to speak for Arcadia, but right now, the trail, you know, goes in Arcadia and it's along 19 there and my understanding is it's not even in Arcadia town limits, but if I was Arcadia.
It's in between Cicero and Arcadia.
Yeah, if I was Arcadia, my thought would be I would rather see that trail come along through the town than along 19. There again, I can't speak to that. I've had some preliminary discussions with the consultant that worked on the Northern Hamilton County Trail and, you know, they, they informed me that during those initial discussions that they looked at the rail line and they thought that that would probably be an optimal situation, that they were advised that, and they actually went to the Port Authority and the Port Authority rejected it, the idea, so I'm not saying.
And they, well, and they probably went to it before they decided not to rent the train.
Yeah, well, and, and I'm not saying I have more power than the Northern Hamilton County Trail, but I look at it as from the Port Authority standpoint, most, the Port Authority's formed to, to see that right of way maintained, right? And the people represented on that board, you know, that's, that's their, their charter to, to do that. I, I think the, the conversion to a trail would, would be best decided by going to the county commissioner and saying, hey, you're a third owner of this, what, what's your thought? You know, we've got the, the three people here and, or the three communities in, in Northern Hamilton County, this is your district that would like to see this happen, you know, and approach Noblesville. It may be a long shot. I've had a lot of people say, well, that'll never happen, well, you know, until you ask and try.
You say you went to Tipton and they were Tipton, city of Tipton and county was in favor of it?
Yeah, right. Now, I've been to a public meeting there to speak with them, but I've, I've spoken to one of the commissioners in the economic development, so I, I mean, I.
And they're a third owner of it?
No, no, they're not a third owner.
Oh, they're not?
No, it's, it's Fishers, Noblesville and the county.
Okay.
So, so really, Tipton's, from their standpoint, as far as my understanding, they, they would not have any leverage to apply to Noblesville or the county, right? But, you know, I thought the more people that'd be interested in it, who would support it, you know, perhaps someone from Tipton might lend a, lend it here to, you know, someone south that's, hey, this is not a bad idea, we like this, we welcome this and, you know, I, I talked to someone from Hamilton Heights who was involved in the Northern Hamilton County Trail and, and I know at one point in time that was their preferred route instead of along 19. I've not asked.
It's safer.
Yeah, I've not asked and, and, and even, you know, there's, there's faults with it, you know, there's, you know, I stopped and I think, you know, I've got a, my youngest son's now in eighth grade and I'd probably feel pretty comfortable, but if he was in sixth grade, would I want him to write up the trip along 19? But then I stopped thinking, well, if he went on the, where the rail line is, he'd be out in the county, who's to say there's not someone hiding behind a bush, right? You know what I mean? So, there, there's pros and cons to both of those and, and I can't answer all those questions. I might, I guess the way in which I would do this and the way I would envision this is, you know, in the last sixty days, if I could get the support of the communities, is I, I would look to have a meeting where I would call and bring in individuals, you know, from all the communities that were in support of it and at that time formulate a plan on how we want to proceed with this and the best way of convincing the govern, the, the county and Noblesville to, to support the idea. So, still, still a dream level, but, but it's gotta start somewhere.
That's right.
Any questions?
Great idea.
All right, well, I appreciate the time tonight. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. Okay, we'll move on. Next order of new businesses, tap fee. Touch on that?
The house that Max used to own on the north side of county line that they're putting onto ours, where he knows there's a thousand dollar tap fee. He, since it's, the house isn't in his name anymore, he's still paying for all the stuff to be done over there. He wants to know if he can pay five hundred on the tap fee and then bill him a hundred dollars for the next five months. Instead of, he said, you know, you can bill it to me, you can put it all in my name, you know, instead of the, the new people, you know, because we know Max isn't going anywhere. I said that I would run up and apply to you guys. I know, I remember when, when, when the guy, when Mike Lee wanted to make payments on the deposit of the trailer park and you guys didn't want to do that.
This is, this is for sewer. We're talking about tap fee for sewer.
Here's what's gonna happen. The house was condemned, which everybody knows has been empty, on the west side of that house, three little foot, a two-chamber septic tank with a dosing tank on it, a thousand and a five hundred. And there's gonna be a pump in that dosing tank and a directional bore from the west side of that house to the manhole by my dad's garage. You're talking about that one right there? We did it for the house across from subdivision, Hawkins Drive, right there, Rivals, there. That's on our sewer now. It's the same, they did a little, they did a different tank, but the reason the guy, if they're doing this, is they can get this tank cheaper, I don't know if he's already got a tank, but this way if the power goes out, they don't need a generator, they'll have capacity till the power comes on.
So, basically no finger.
It's actually system without a finger, yeah.
Runs into our sanitariums.
But see what they're gonna have, I mean, they'll have a, a tank, they'll have a septic tank, they're still gonna have to maintain. It's been approved by the Board of Health over there, basically they're gonna get rid of all their liquid on this two-inch line, they're gonna, Daystar's gonna directional bore from basically the side of that house to the side of that manhole, right there. They've been, this has been like in the works for two years. They finally got it worked out. They got some modified system approved, but there's, there's, there's just not enough property there, you know? They would have purchased more property to get a septic system and nobody around them is selling it, so. Max is footing the bid, I've met with the contractor, Max is paying for a whole septic system for his main, a whole thing and the tap.
Is this a permanent thing or is it, were you?
It'll be on sewer forever.
I mean, I mean, there's no way, once they're on, you can't get them off.
Get them off for what?
Well, I just want to know how permanent it is, you know, just.
Forever, I mean, what, what's there on, you're not gonna take them off?
They're on our water, right?
Yeah, they're already a water customer.
Okay.
They have been for nineteen sixty-eight.
And if he doesn't, he can lean it.
Yeah. The way we've financed that fees before.
No, but when we, most of our tap fees are out of the subdivision and the builder just, I mean, you know, it's a builder, it's not a single person. No, but we take payments on water bills and people get those water bills, so, I mean, at least this is sewer, we can put a lien on it.
Yeah, I know it, he's, he's been in a chiller to do it, yeah.
Is that the reason? I'm not sure he's.
Yeah, well, they put a new roof on the house too. It's part of this whole thing. Part of this whole thing. But I don't, you don't know, I don't know what is in the numbers gonna be on this, but it's dropping to be in the $7,000, $8,000 range.
I don't have a property.
If we put a lien on the property, if they don't pay it, I'm all right with it. There's another customer on this, too.
Do it half then?
Yeah, I suppose.
If people would want it up here, it's about the bucks.
Make motion, we approve the tap for Max.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other new business from the floor tonight?
Have we heard anything about, got any more bids for taking down the two houses?
No. I mean, money to take down two houses. I know Amy sent a copy to me and Annanino where she's trying to get another, you know, look at another option for money to take them down.
Like to see them down or that?
I'm just curious, how much does it cost to take down this two houses?
About $25,000.
For both?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Tear the houses down, dig the foundations up, bring the earth in, fill it, grate it, seed it. Right in there, right in there.
Nothing new.
I got one thing for you guys. I'm gonna get the papers here. I forgot about it. Cochran Exteriors is the only one that's responded on my roofing thing. I've called several different ones. I have form for you guys to review, sign, feel like the attorney did, whatever, so that they can communicate with our insurance company.
Who can, so who can communicate with our attorney?
The contractor, with our insurance company.
About what?
About these roofs, and this insurance company will disavow damage.
So, we can get to repairs.
Well, that, and still, they're gonna have the argument with me about the sewer plant and about the shelter house. So, I don't agree with the adjuster they sent out. It's an independent adjuster, waiting for our insurance company. If you guys don't want to mess with it, just tell me.
First damage I want to take care of.
Get over there on my desk, we'll get them seated.
Yeah.
We won't think you guys are rude if you want to leave.
No, I'm staying with it. It truly is interesting to hear, you know, it's just about the same thing, just different approaches and thoughts and...
So, basically, this company just deals with...
Well, they're gonna do for us, but, yeah.
Let me ask you.
It's Lance Busby. Well, we've got an idiot. Nobody, I only got to what the insurance adjuster did. Everybody I've called, nothing.
Nothing back with you or anything?
Nope.
You said Lance Busby, did that name?
Terry Busby, so.
He's this company?
No, he works for, works for them. They're doing, they've done some other ones here in town. Because this was, the gazebo was on the west. All the roofs had the hail damage.
The insurance company's already sent the adjuster out and says that there's not damage on that building.
But there is. I said there is.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, oh, yeah, he did. He told me that it was an abrasion in the oxidation of the shingle. He's like, "You ever put a roof on?" I said, "I put the roof on. You're standing on it." You know, so it is for twenty years. Yeah, he asked me, "Did you ever roof something before?" I said, "I put the roof on. You're standing on it." So, I said, "You could, I mean, you can stand on that roof. There's gotta be like 10,000 spots on it." And that's why I told him, I said, "The gazebo looks better than the shelter house." I just think it's odd. Here's what I think's odd. The one building that's got a brand-new roof, it's like six months old. It's not hail damage. Even though it's torn and beat all to death, you can go out there and look at it. It's ridiculous.
It's not hail damage.
Yeah, that's what it is then. And then, the biggest roof we own is, okay. You know, I just think, I just think it's odd. I mean, you can stand in, you can stand in the playground and see it from the ground. You don't even have to get on the roof.
He was looking at the water leads. The water leads are a little wide. He just assumed that, you know...
I don't know. I'm not trying to chip anybody, but we got insurance, it's like, it's beat all up, you know. I mean, you can just, you can stand on the ground and look at it. And they may still say no, you know. The adjuster said, "We have an issue," or, not the adjuster, but our insurance agent, if there was an issue. Because this company has done other houses here in town, too. I mean, for other insurance, they're an independent adjuster that does work for a bunch of insurance companies.
You know, as many hail damage homes we've had in Arcadia, there's dozens and half people, you know, like, they go right now, it's getting new roofs. And you wouldn't think, yeah, I'm sure there is.
They were walking the streets.
And you wouldn't think the insurance company would kick that much, you know. Especially we haven't made a claim for quite some time, have we?
Nothing, never, nothing like this.
Has there been a fire claim?
Nothing ever like this. The tornado was the last thing we had with the town garage and the fire station. Those roofs were done, they were pulled off.
That's off all sides, they don't...
Should we wait until we get to get that resolved?
Get what resolved?
The two roofs that are in question?
That's what they're gonna do.
They're going to work on resolving that for us?
Yeah, photograph it, do a report. That's why they want that, so they can talk to our insurance company. They got a guy that does this. He's gonna come out, he's gonna photograph everything, do their whole inspection of it, and send a report telling them that's where we're at, you know.
In exchange for obviously getting the roof plans. They're not proceeding with that, or... That, you know, it looks like we don't have much choice, and Andy's contacted other contractors, and they can't get any reply there. So, you know, and these guys are going to go to the insurance company and argue the other roofs, so...
I just don't want to, you know, I mean, she said, you know, "Our claim is still open," but, you know, more time that goes by, I'd rather...
Absolutely.
Just get somebody on and get it done this year, and plus, you know, we got shingles. You know, we got that leak and that one, the ball-dimin work.
You know, part of that's come off, and, which that's in there, but...
You're second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Any other new business tonight?
I make a motion, we'll sign the claims during the meeting.
I'll second that motion.